Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, it's 7:00 PM on February the 28th. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community Schools Board of Education, which we seem to have a few missing members of. We're going to begin our meeting this evening, 214.22 with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, led by Maria Mitter.
All right. I applaud the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Maria. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Albrecht?
Here.
Dr. Weaver?
I am here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Ms. May is here. Ms. Hines is here, President Cox, and then we have Mr. Buckle with Ethic.
Thank you, Ms. Hines, and let the record reflect Ms. May's attendance when she reappears at the table. The next item on our agenda, 216.22, carries two parts, Part A and Part B. I would like to ask a member of the board if they would make a motion to move 216.22 to 217.22B so that it will appear after citizens' comments, giving citizens an opportunity to make a comment on that item before the board votes on it.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mr. Albrecht, support by Mr. Neal. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. The item is moved, let the record reflect Ms. May is at the table. So with that, 216.22, recognitions and presentations, Dr. Dignan.
Thank you, President Cox, good evening, Board and community. At this time, I'd like to call up Dr. Shamy and Mr. Joe Urban. They're going to do a presentation on the benchmark assessments, so I'm going to turn it over to them right now.
Hello, thank you very much, I'm Tara Shamy. You already know Joe Urban, and we're just going to talk you through really quickly some progress toward our goals. Excuse me. When the pandemic hit, we had to shift a little bit and we had to set some different goals than we have in our district improvement plan. And so, we kind of took a look at our NWEA, which is our benchmark assessment, and Joe is going to talk more about what that means. And I'm going to show you a sampling of what is in the report, which will be posted to our website, but this is a requirement of the MDE, and we'll report out again at the end of the school year. So, okay. So, MDE requires each district to administer a benchmark assessment. We have selected NWEA as ours. All the goals that we had to set are related to growth. And so you'll see, as we move forward through the presentation, you'll see that our goals are really focused on our students and whether or not they're reaching their goals on NWEA. All of our goals are also aligned to our COVID-19 plan, which was mandated last year, and so we kept the same structure and process for our goals, and we're seeking to reach those goals this year. And they apply to all buildings and all grade levels. We're not going to go through every single building and every single grade level with you tonight, but it is in your report, and it'll be posted to the website for anyone to see.
So, I'm here to talk about, give some context to the scores that you're going to see, what do they mean? One of the things that's important about assessment is you have to understand that different assessments are built for different things, and understanding the context and how things are reported is an important part to using the data and understanding the data that comes out of those. But let me talk a little bit first about our benchmark assessment. It's NWEA, you'll often hear it referred to as NWA. NWA is actually the nonprofit company that produces the assessment. The assessment that we actually use is called MAP, Measures of Academic Progress. NWA has several products, so you'll hear the terms NWA and MAP used interchangeably, and 99% of the time, people are talking about the same assessment, because that's, the MAP is the primary assessment used when people are talking about NWA. It's one of four that was approved by MDE. Districts could use their own, but we have been using NWA since 2013, 14. It's already part of our system and something that we're used to, so it was an easy choice, especially when it was approved. And in fact, NWA is used by about 75% of the schools in the state for the, to meet the requirements of the legislation for a benchmark assessment. So I want to explain, NWA is what's called a computer adaptive test. What that means is, questions get harder or easier depending upon whether students get the questions right or wrong. So, if students continue to get them right, the questions get more difficult until it settles in at their level and where they're at. So, as that last bullet points says, they increase or decrease in difficulty in real time, depending on whether they get it right or wrong. So, NWA scores are reported out on something called the RIT scale. The RIT scale is something akin to a scale score and many other assessments, if you've heard that. It's an achievement scale, so depending on what the student scores, it's correlated to the Michigan State standards. So we kind of get an idea what standards a student has mastered or still has to work on, depending on their score. The nice thing about the RIT scale that's different from a lot of assessments is that it's stable. And when I say stable, what I mean is that regardless of how old the student is or what grade they're in, if you get, if the student gets a 200, they get a 200, whether they're a fifth grader, a seventh grader, 11th grader, it means the same thing. So that makes it useful for growth. Over time, we can see a progression from wherever the student starts. And like I said, it's the same regardless of the grade or age of the student. So, after an assessment, NWA provides each student with what's called a RIT score based on that RIT scale, and then the student has a goal set based on, by NWA. So, NWA did, does a norming study every five years. So from 2015 to 2019, they took hundreds and hundreds of thousands of assessment scores and basically did a whole bunch of calculations for averages. What's the average growth for a fifth grader from fall to spring? What's the average growth for a fifth grader from fall to winter? What's the average growth for 11th graders, et cetera? So they calculate all these norms to give us an idea of how students are growing in comparison to other students, is how it comes out. So, they set a goal based on that average. So if you're a fifth grader, and you started, as I mentioned, you had a 200 score in the fall, based on those norms, they'll give you a goal based on, you know, what is the average fifth grader that had a 200 in the fall? What's the average score at the end of the year? That's their target. So, regardless of grade, it's based on kids of the same age that had the same starting RIT score for the comparison period. Important things to remember about this score, student growth's not a straight line. So, just like you think about your kids when you're growing up, marking on the door, kids grow, different spurts, same thing with their education. Sometimes they have bigger leaps, sometimes they have smaller leaps, so they're not always going to meet the average growth for, over a certain time period. Sometimes they're going to grow a little more, sometimes a little less. So, if a student doesn't meet that goal, that doesn't mean they didn't grow, that means that they just didn't meet the average that time. They might hit it the next time going forward. In an average school, so to put this in some context for you, in an average school, it would be expected and normal for half of your students to hit their target and half of them not to make the target, because it's an average growth. Some kids are going to grow a little bit more, some kids are going to grow a little bit less. So that's why our targets are set at 50% or better. Are we growing at the national average or better? That's what our goal is, for each student. And it's also important to remember that NWA is a single data point in a single day in a student's life. You got to take into account all of the information that we have in the student. It's one point on one day, it's not the end-all, be-all.
So, these are the goals that we set together, we met together last year, and then we used the same process for this year. And so, as Joe said, we sought for 50% of our students to reach their goals on NWEA. Of course, we want 100% of our students to meet their goals, and we want 100% of our students to be as successful as possible, but our goal, a realistic goal, was that 50% would meet that RIT that was projected from NWEA. And in this particular report, what you're going to see is a middle of the year and an end of the year. And so, for both, the goal is that 50% of the students will reach that goal, and it'll change, so the winter to spring, it adjusts, NWA will adjust for each student. So we're going to, I'm going to show you what it looks like for the fall to winter, and then it'll have some empty spaces, and we'll do this again in spring, come back and show you where we ended up at the end of the school year. But for all of our goals in math and reading, for K through 8, this data that you're going to see today is specific to K through 8 students. And so, for each category, we hope to see at least 50% of our students meeting their goal. These are the numbers that are averaged for the entire district, and this is what is required by the MDE to break it down by these particular subgroups. And so what you see in, on the screen and in your report are the percentage of students in each of these groups that met their NWEA RIT growth goal. And so, for all students across the board, 41% of students in Wayne Westland, K through 8, met their fall to winter goal on NWEA. In math, it was 44% across the board. And so those are our, those are big general numbers, but that's thousands and thousands of kids all in one dataset. Then it's broken down by our economically disadvantaged, and you can see the number drop just a little bit, and special education where it drops just a little bit more. And to me, when I look at these, I think that they're data points that help you to ask the next question. And so if that 33% in special education, that struck me first. And so I wanted to dig deeper into, okay, so which students, where, what grade levels? What are we, what do we need to do to meet the needs of more of our students? And so we break this down even further. We, I take this and break it down by grade level, by school, so that our school leaders, our instructional leaders can see at first grade level, this is what's happening in their school. And it's broken down by these demographics so that they can see if it's working or not working for students. And so this breaks it also down by gender. And then, for us, in Wayne Westland, our two categories of race are Caucasian and African-American students, and this represents thousands of students here, but you can see that they all hover right around 40%. Like, it's a pretty general, generally, they all hover right around 40%. But once you start to dig a little bit deeper, it gives you more information, but this is a great starting point for the conversations that come next, which are, okay, so where are the things, where are great things happening? Where's the most growth happening and why? And where's the, where are the spaces where we need to really increase or change or adjust our instruction so that we can see more students finding success? This one breaks it down by grade level, and this wasn't required by the state, but this really helps us, I know, for, like for Joe and I, when we look at it for, as, from an assessment perspective, seeing it by grade level is a lot more helpful for me when it's broken down this way. And if you look at the scores above, you can see that our youngest kids, fewer of them are reaching those goals on NWEA. And so that's a big aha for us, like to look at that and go, okay, wait. So first and second graders, they're at the lower end of these percentages, and so we need to really look at that and what's happening. How do we support our first graders and our second graders to bring those numbers up? As you get to the higher grade levels, you can see that almost half of our eighth graders are meeting their growth goals on NWEA. And so this is, again, one more data point that brings more questions. And so, as I look at this, now I want to know which schools? Now I want to break down first grade by school. Is it working somewhere? And what's happening differently in that particular grade level or in that particular classroom? And so it's a, it's a beginning of a conversation that can help lead to an increase in student achievement. I wanted to just show you a couple highlights, because this year we, I chose middle school as our big highlight for this year. In middle school, they did a competition this year, and one of the things with NWEA, and I experienced it as a teacher and as an instructional coach, that if the students really own that learning and understand that they have this goal and that their, this test means something, and that they're really pushing themselves and taking it seriously, their growth presents itself on NWEA. And so in our middle schools, they challenged each other, and we challenged them to shift the way they were thinking about the scores this year. Generally, they did a two-point analysis, but because of the way we set our district goals, we wanted them to look at how many of their students were meeting that goal. And so, in our middle schools, in multiple places, you can see the black boxes are where we exceeded that 50%. And so our sixth graders at all three middle schools exceeded that 50% goal. In eighth grade, we had some significant growth in math, especially in eighth grade at Adams Franklin, over 50% of their students met their goals. And so, I wanted to, I wanted to point out something to celebrate, and this to me was a big celebration, they really did work hard for it, and we saw some significant growth in our middle schools from fall to winter. The full report, which you have, will also be posted to the websites required by MDE, and it will break this down by school. So you'll see the same data that we just showed you, but you'll see it for each of our elementary schools and each of our middle schools. And if anyone has any questions, yes?
I had a question about the two-year learning loss due to the COVID. So what is the variance between that? Because I know that it affected a lot of the younger kids, that they didn't really have the experience to learn those first two years because of the COVID. And then I actually would like, if you guys can do a report, I'm really concerned about our high school students with our career college readiness, especially with their math and English language skills, because when you go to college, you have to write, you know, essays, and then with the math, and even the career tech, they have these tests. Like, say if you're going to be like a middle-right college student, you have to pass these tests. So is there a way to get some type of a clue of like, what's going on with the high schoolers? You know, the way you did the middle school?
Absolutely, there are, and it wasn't required in this particular report to present to you today, but I love doing NWA data, so whatever. So if you would like to see more data, I'm happy to provide that for you and break it down however you would like to see it.
Because I'm wondering, I'm giving it maybe like that two years to make up, I think it'll probably, you know, increase because we have to make up from the loss.
And I'll let Joe talk about that, the NWA has done some research on that, I'll let Joe talk about that.
So, I can talk about the learning loss. NWA has done some of their research comparing the data from particularly last year. Obviously, they don't have anything from this year because we're not through the year yet. But on average, so I mentioned that norming study. So out of that, they published what's called percentiles. So, you know, if you think about your, the highest scoring kids are in the 99th percentile, and the lowest scoring kids would be around the one, first percentile. And remember, all this data was taken from 2015 to 2019 on that study, so they could compare normal to last year. It varied by grade level, but in ELA or reading, kids were scoring about, I believe, about 5%, 5 percentile. So, if you draw the line at 50%, if kids were at 50%, were scoring at 45th percentile in ELA or reading, and they were scoring about 10 points below in math. And it was worse in lower socioeconomic, they broke it down. It actually was more like 8 and 12. I'm close, I'm not dead on, but in comparison, they were 8 to 12. 8 below in reading and 12 below in math, lower. So there's some catch-up that's got to happen, for sure, based on those numbers.
Mel?
Do you think summer enrichment programs might help with that learning loss over the summer?
Anytime kids are in school and getting quality work, it's going to help. It's like anything else, the more you practice, certainly, you tend to get better.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Doctor Shamy.
Kim, did you have a?
Yeah, just really quick.
Sure, Ms. May, Ms. May has a question.
Sorry.
All right. Just to follow up to the question that Melody asked, or Ms. Hines asked, Ms. Hines asked in regards to the high school. You mentioned the NWEA, but the high school students don't take the NWEA.
Yes, they do.
Did you hear, oh, I missed it.
Yeah, but for the purposes of this report, we had to report K through 8.
So one more question. Will you, or do you look at the course failure rates or only NWEA?
No, we look at all of that.
Okay, so would that be a part of the presentation as well, or just NWEA?
It certainly could be.
It could be.
Yeah.
I would like to see.
Joe and I can present whatever data you really ask us for.
Thank you.
Other members of the Board? Thank you. As you heard earlier, we're going to bypass B. So we're going to go to C, Emergency Connectivity Fund Grant, Scott?
Good evening, Board and Community. I'm extremely happy to present the next Board item. The Wayne Westland Community School District has been awarded a $3 million Emergency Connectivity Grant through the Federal Communications Commission. This grant is part of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 to help schools and libraries support remote learning. Wayne Westland received the biggest award in Michigan, and also was number six in the nation in regards to the funding that we received. So it's a pretty, it was one of the, like I said, we were in the top 10 in the nation for the amount of money we received in this grant. The funds will be used to provide 3,750 kindergarten through 4th grade students with an iPad with a built-in cellular data capability. It will also provide nearly 1,700 5th through 12th grade students with a Chromebook with built-in cellular data, which is a game changer for us in regards to some of the issues we had during the pandemic and giving kids hotspots and so on. Now we're going to be able to give them a device that's going to have that connected already. So as I said, it's a game changer for our students in regards to receiving these LTE devices. This will also help our students and families that did not have the access, obviously. And we have hundreds of students that did not have that access based on the issues that we had during the last two years. So this is an absolute game changer for us in the district, and like being one of the, the only districts in the, the highest funding in the district for this grant or in the country, which I just found out today is amazing. So this is, like I said, it's a game changer for the district.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment. First of all, thanks. In conjunction with the assessment report, and in particular first and second grade, I know how critical it was several years ago, we struggled as a district to meet normal growth because our students were actually being assessed technically or technologically once a year, or twice a year. And first and second graders coming into our school district, we didn't even have devices for them, and when the pandemic hit, it's not a surprise to me that we struggled with those test scores, because it was probably the first chance those students had to actually do an assessment using an electronic tool.
Correct.
So, I'm really glad this is going to put something in their hands at a very young age that's going to give them a heads up, or a step up, I should say.
It changes the game, because we've changed the way we teach kids at this point. For us to have the capacity to be able to do this is really amazing at this point. And I do, and I did forget, I do credit the Technology Department filed all the paperwork for this grant, so I do thank them, and I recognize them.
So, we've been approved for the grant, we're going to receive the monies. When do you anticipate we're actually going to be able to put devices in the hands of our students?
What do you think, Inshaan, that?
I can answer that. It, actually, we have to, before the end of the school year.
Yeah.
So it's going to move pretty aggressive. They have to be in the hands before we hit the summer.
It's possible to obtain the quantities and what have you?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we, and just like Dr. Dignan just said, in regards to where the grant funding is, that is where it's at in regards to getting them in hands. So even with some of the situations we have with getting any product at this point, we have to be able to do that with this grant, because that's how it's written in the funding for it.
Is the deadline the end of June, or?
I think it is.
Yeah.
Yep.
Question that kind of hovers in my mind is, I don't want the iPads to be used for some older siblings' business enterprises, or?
Correct.
Is there some kind of limitations on where on the internet these?
With the purchase, and I don't know if Dr. Dignan's going to talk, but with the purchase of the iPads, we're going to purchase professional development for our teachers and for our teachers to be able to use them effectively with fidelity with our kids. So that's where we're at with, in regards to giving them the opportunity, and I get what you're saying, to just bring it home. They'll have the capacity with the, with that, with the Wi-Fi accessibility, but our teachers will be able to use them.
Well, I'm just wondering what happens after the student goes to bed for the night? And what happens to the device? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'd love to be able to answer that question.
Here, I'll jump in and help. We will, we can have the ability to put safeguards and stuff just to our network.
Because we have some creative people.
We do.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Our next item, the SEL presentation by Darryl Beebe and Amanda Dyvis.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Hope that you all are well. So, once again, my name is Darryl Beebe, I'm the Executive Director of College of Career Readiness and Social Emotional Learning. And with me, I have Amanda Dyvis, Supervisor of Family Engagement and Community Engagement. And so, just real quick, we want to give you all a brief spotlight on emotional learning for the district and what we're doing, what we've been working on throughout this year. So, quick definition, social emotional learning. Social emotional learning is SEL, is a methodology that helps students of all ages to better comprehend their emotions, to feel those emotions fully, and to demonstrate empathy for others. These learned behaviors are then used to help students make positive, responsible decisions, create frameworks to achieve their goals, and build positive relationships with others. And so as we talk about social emotional learning, of course, we understand that we cannot provide education for students and put, we put bodies in chairs, but we need to make sure that the physiological needs are being met, safety needs are being met, loving and belonging, esteem, and all of those things that come with Maslow's hierarchy of needs. So that's our number one goal as we educate folks. We need to make sure that their needs are met. Turn it over to your manager.
Good evening. I'd like to share that the district created a mental health task force as a result of the pandemic to focus on mental health needs of students and staff. Some of our priorities are listed on the screen for you this evening, but we wanted to increase support-seeking behavior of both students and staff. We wanted to reduce the stigma in our community around mental health, increase support with community mental health partners, also create mental health awareness activities such as Be a Buddy Week, Mental Health Awareness Month, which is in May, and Suicide Prevention Week. We placed mental health libraries in all of our buildings, from preschool all the way up through high school. Some of our buildings got as many as 50 different books around different topics, such as grief and loss, anxiety, depression, anger management, to help students learn how to cope with their emotions. We are also planning a mental health symposium during Mental Health Awareness Month, which is in May, around suicide prevention. This is some of our staff at PD Graham Elementary School during their Be a Buddy Week efforts. One of the largest initiatives of the Mental Health Task Force is suicide prevention. So, our Mental Health Task Force created a framework for our middle and high schools to follow during those weeks, which included a student poster contest to help us get the word out about the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. This lifeline is also listed on all student IDs for grades 6 through 12. We also are members and sit on the Wayne County Suicide Prevention Committee, which works with seven other surrounding districts with the goal of zero suicide within our county. The goal is to have all school staff trained in the Question, Persuade, Refer Method of Suicide Prevention by 2023. Wayne Westland Community Schools is ahead of this curve by already having over 800 of our school staff trained, and all of our staff will be trained before the deadline. We have been working with surrounding mental health partners to complete this work, including but not limited to Growth Works and Higera Health. We are also working with the Canton Rotary, who recently wrote and got accepted for a grant to help support suicide prevention in our district. They are going to be supporting us through helping sponsor our symposium that we will hold in May around suicide prevention for our community geared towards our parents and guardians around what to do if your student is showing signs of suicide. They are also printing additional materials, or I'm sorry, purchasing additional materials for our mental health libraries around suicide prevention, and are in the process of mass producing materials showing warning signs and where to get help for parents in our school community. Due to their efforts, Due to their efforts, the Canton Rotary was also just asked to present at their district conference, which will be coming up this summer on their efforts with our district.
In addition to those supports, one of our goals was to provide additional mental health supports for students and to put that support within buildings. So we started with CNS Healthcare, and now we have school-based therapists that are currently at Stevenson as well as at Franklin Middle School. And then we also have social workers through BOMA that provide support at the clinics over at Adams. We also have a social worker that's in place at Wayne Memorial. And then lastly, we're working on providing support for all elementary schools. We've been in conversations with Easter Seals in Michigan. Unfortunately, they have been, I should say, yeah, unfortunately, they've been providing support for Oxford, so the movement has been somewhat slow. But in the fall, we will place therapists from Easter Seals at one building at a time. And then we'll also provide telehealth support for those students as well throughout the district.
To touch on a few of our larger mental health providers that we've been working with, Higera Health, which is in our community, has been working with us to provide Question, Persuade, Refer training. They've also been training the staff, who will be the instructors of QPR, to make sure that we can continue these efforts moving forward. We also have seen an increase in need for bereavement services due to the pandemic. So we do have specific agencies in our district whom provide bereavement services such as Sandcastles, Angela Hospice, and New Hope Center for Grief. We have been working with them more over the last two years, including providing support to our district crisis team, but also providing bereavement services to our students and families in need. Higera will also be supporting our district when we roll out our Suicide Prevention Symposium in May. They will be sitting on our panel and providing expert advice on this topic. They will also be supporting our district as we roll out Alice come the fall. Higera is also going to be providing mental health first aid to any staff who choose to take this. This course will be offered free for staff.
Another partnership that we have worked on since the beginning of the school year, and many have probably seen U of M Trails on the news for their work in SEL. And so, we've been in conversations with U of M Trails throughout the start of the school year, and we started off small with a small group of principals and building leaders. But fortunately, through our relationship with Wayne RISA and 31P Funding, we were able to secure U of M Trails for every building within the school district. And so, we're very excited about that, and we're gonna roll it out in the spring, and I should say, we're gonna start our discussions in the spring, and we will roll out U of M Trails in every building in the fall.
I'm excited to share with you this evening about CARESALIS. CARESALIS is a program that we signed with our district for the rest of this year and all of next. This is a free and confidential service to any Wayne Westland school staff and their family and all students and their families. And very simply, what it is, is it takes the lift off of the individual who's seeking mental health services off their plate. A referral is made by a mental health professional at the school, either a social worker, a psychologist, or a counselor. Within 15 minutes of that referral being made, CARESALIS reaches out to the parent and finds out information about their insurance, what their needs are seeking a counselor or therapist, and where they live. CARESALIS then works on the parent's behalf to contact the counselors on their behalf and find a clinician for them and even set an appointment. The appointment has to be made within two weeks, so they're looking for a very quick turnaround for service. Once the family, psychologist, once the family attends the appointment, CARESALIS then calls the family back to make sure that they liked the provider, and if for whatever reason it wasn't a good match, they start that process over. Our staff is also able to access services through CARESALIS by simply calling the number that you see on your screen. They're available 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Staff and families can also search anonymously and not go through the referral process by visiting the website on your screen. You can also either click and search on your own or click a simple button that says Video Chat, which will pull up a live person to set up an appointment with you.
Another initiative that we're super proud of is the Compassion Project, and we've partnered with the City of Wayne Westland, and what we do is recognize students for random acts of kindness. So this has been an incredible program that's worked out wonderfully, and we're excited through our connections and our partnership with Mayor Wild as well as Vic Barra, as well as MJR Theater, who provides our students with gift cards for the movie theater and whatnot, and also Wayne Ford Civic League. And so, we're really excited about this, and every month, we recognize students, three or four students from schools, and here you see pictures of us with students who are being recognized at the city council meeting. So it's been a really great experience. The first photo, you see students from Roosevelt, PD Graham, as well as Wildwood. The second photo, you see students from Hicks, Hamilton, Edison, and also from Elliott. So it's been a wonderful program for our students as well as our families.
Helping to meet our families' basic needs, we have our Family Resource Center, which has been in our district since 1995. So we currently have three locations located at Adams, Franklin, and John Glenn. We are open year-round. Our phone number rings at all three sites, which is the number on your screen, 734-419-2709. Families are also welcome to email us. All of our staff have access to that email. We assist families with basic need assistance, whether that's material goods through our Family Resource Center or the ability to be connected to resources in our community. We can help with laundry assistance, emergency toiletries, socks, undergarments, basic needs, anything that a family might need. We can give phone numbers to rental assistants, food, utility assistants, tutoring, and we have a database of hundreds of different numbers for our community. We encourage any family in need to please give us a call. An initiative through our Family Resource Center is our Blessings in a Backpack Program, which is new to our district this year. This program feeds children on the weekends and during holiday breaks. Currently, we are feeding students in need at Hicks, and we're also providing job opportunities or experience for our post-secondary students who are packing up the bags for students in need. They ride with the bags to Hicks Elementary School on the school bus, and they deliver it to the students in need. Our program is going so well that we've already outgrown our current space, and we're in the process of setting up a new, bigger space at Stevenson Middle School. And here's a picture of some of our post-secondary students packing up food for students in need at Hicks.
So as we close, you know, we always say that if there's a student in need, we definitely want you all to reach out at the elementary school level, to reach out to the school social worker, at the middle school and high school level, reach out to the school counselor. Those are your first contacts. However, if you have additional questions or concerns, you can also reach myself as well as Amanda. So thank you so much for your time, and if you have questions, we'll take them now.
Questions, members of the board, comments? Ms. May?
So first of all, I'd just like to say, thank you for this presentation. This is awesome. I love the support that are in place for our students. I do have just one question in regards to the school-based therapists. So I know that there are several partnerships that are awesome, and so you have a school-based therapist at Stevenson and Franklin, but not one at Adams. And so, I'm just kind of wondering, like, with those pieces, what are the plans to make a whole across the district?
So we do have a social worker that's at Adams through BOMA, but we're gonna really, we're gonna see how it goes with our folks that are currently in place. And then, if it goes well, we'll add a therapist over at Adams as well. But we want to make sure that things are going well before we expand.
Okay, and is that the same for the high school with the, where you have a second social worker at one of the high schools, but then we have two other high schools? So just, you know what I mean, just wondering how to bring that balance and how we can support that so that we are giving the same to all of our students?
So our goal is to have folks, you know, have those supports, additional supports everywhere, but once again, as we roll, move forward, we want to make sure that things are working well before we expand into those other places. If they are going well, we will expand, and we have also been in talks with Easter Seals even about expanding some support center at high school, but we'll see how it goes first at the lower levels and then commitment, and then we'll go forward with that.
I'm gonna jump in too, real quick. We've been targeting for our high schools, a school-based health clinic too, which is gonna provide it, the social worker at the high school at Wayne Memorial is through a grant. So again, it's not hitting our general fund or anything. It's actually coming through a grant, but we've been in talks to bring a school-based health clinic at one of the high schools and then kind of scale it from there so we can get it at both high schools, which would help with sport physicals, having them on hand to meet the needs of our kids.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes, I'd like to thank you for your services when it comes to, you know, our mental health for our children. Being a parent, especially when your kids are in junior high, a lot of parents experience the kids have anxiety, depression, and, you know, even though you work a full-time job, sometimes it's hard with insurance. Either you have Medicaid, sometimes they don't take the Medicaid. If you have certain insurances, they're out-of-pocket costs. So I really thank you guys for making it a lot easier for parents dealing with the situation, especially, you know, with the COVID, because my son said a lot of his friends are suffering from depression, anxiety, you know, when they were cooped up, they weren't out with people. They didn't have friends, so it caused a lot of mental illness issues with the children. So, you know, I definitely applaud you guys to make it easier for the parents and the students in crosswise, because psychiatry is really expensive, you know, especially if your insurance doesn't cover a lot, and we don't want kids missing out because their parents can't afford it. So I really commend you guys for, you know, doing that to help our kids with the mental health issues.
Other members of the board? When you presented the CARESALIS, you talked about you would kind of do a triage and find out what kind of insurance they had. What if a family is interested in mental health or substance abuse support and they don't have insurance? Do we still have options for them?
Yes, so CARESALIS can work with all families and staff regardless of their insurance. They would seek out at that point providers who are either free or sliding scale.
Okay, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, the board is now going to move on to 217.22 Citizens' Comments on Agenda Items. This is a portion of the meeting reserved for citizens to make comments or presentations to the board on items which appear on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the board on items that appear on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to 217.22A, which is Presentation on Sex Education Program, Dr. Tara Shamy.
Hello again. Switching gears just a little bit, I want to talk to you a little bit about our sex education program and the laws of the state of Michigan and walk you through the process that we're about to embark on in the coming months. I'm presenting this to you today because I've gone through this process 17 times previously in a different district, and so I understand the MDE's requirements, and I want to make sure that all of you understand because the laws around sex education are interesting. We don't come to you if we want to, if a teacher needs something new for math, right? They can find a resource and they can use it in their classroom, but that's very different for a sex education program, and there are some very strict guidelines. So I want to make sure that you all understand what they are because ultimately, you're the deciders on what we do in the classrooms related to sex education. And please feel free to interrupt me and stop me if you have questions while I go through this. I think this is a new process for most of you. It's been a while since we've gone through it in Wayne Westland, so this is probably new information. So sex education is the only content area that's regulated by laws of the state of Michigan. There are not laws that tell you how to implement ELA curriculum or math curriculum or social studies. Standards, yes, but you don't have to go through this process for those other content areas. Sex ed is different. And so, the first thing you have to do is establish a sex ed advisory board, and this is all detailed in the laws of the state of Michigan. And your sex ed advisory board has to be made up of 50% parents of current Wayne Westland students so that they are the majority voice of the instruction that will eventually take place. Educators are part of that. Medical professionals are required to be on our advisory boards. Clergy members from any denomination are required to be part of that process, and students. The student voice will be heard throughout the process. We'll be establishing whether or not our district is gonna be an abstinence-only or abstinence-based program, and materials and resources will go through a very rigorous selection process and ultimately be approved by, before they can be taught in any of our classrooms. The materials review process is a rigorous one. Educators will review data. We recently gave them IFI survey to students at all of our secondary schools, and so we have access to data around sex education and issues that students might be dealing with that they can actually have in front of them as they make decisions. They'll review the data. They'll look at different instructional resources and make some determinations about what would be best for the students of Wayne Westland. The materials are gonna be reviewed, and this is different. When we put out the invitation to be part of the sex ed advisory board, we had over 150 responses from the community. And so, for me, I've never had that before. I've done it a million times, but I never had more than 20 people, and so I was always able to just invite all 20 people, make sure I had all of my requirements met, but this time we had over 150 people. And so, I talked to Jen Curry and I talked to Dr. Dignan, and we kind of, we didn't want to tell anybody no, that we could not involve them in this process. We wanted to make sure that all voices could be heard as we go through this. And so, they asked me to kind of see if we could divide that up because we do have a lot of work to do in order to get our instructional program in line with the requirements of MDE. And so, what we did was we sent out another survey asking people to identify the grade level that they would be most interested in participating in, and we're gonna divide this up. And our curriculum directors, Adrian Nathan and Kate Broll, are gonna be working with these teams moving forward at these different grade levels. And so, the elementary people can really focus on what's happening in elementary. People who were most interested in the middle school will be part of that group. And so, this is gonna be a little bit different than any, than how I've done it in the past, but we'll be inclusive of all of the voices. Nobody was told, "Thank you for applying, but we're not interested in this time." We are welcoming everybody in, and regardless of whether or not they are on the list that is in front of you today, the public is still welcome to be part of that process and hear those voices. It's a really important part of this. So the sex ed advisory board will ultimately make a recommendation to you. They'll review materials and come back here to you before anything else happens and tell you what those materials are going to be. If it's 5th grade, right now, we have outdated materials in elementary. We need resources that are medically accurate. Things change over time, and the last time they were updated was in the 90s. So the, as we move forward, we want to make sure the kids are getting that factual information. Did you have a question?
No, I just wondered what's changed.
Oh, well...
I mean, I get the paper.
One of the things that has changed is the clothing. It's very distracting for kids when they watch videos that have clothing from the 70s and the 80s. I'll be honest, like, that's a really big part of it. Like, it's so distracting. However, in the HIV video, there have been a lot of changes, and that's the piece that's required by the state, is that one lesson on HIV be delivered in elementary, middle, and high school every year. And so, there are some advancements in medical research with relationship to HIV and AIDS. And so, that's the piece that has to be done every year, and so, that's the only one that's actually medically inaccurate now in 2022. So once the advisory boards meet together and they make some decisions, they're gonna come back to you with that recommendation, and they're gonna let you know exactly what the advisory boards have requested. It will have gone through that process, and you will see those materials and have access to those materials. After coming back to you with this proposal, it's required by the state of Michigan that we hold two public hearings. And so, for any video, for any handout, any text that might be used to teach sex education, they have to be presented in a public hearing. And so, we will offer two opportunities, at least a week apart, for anyone in the public to review those materials. We'll have them electronically. We'll also have them on paper and in person so that people can access those. I've always done it so that the public hearings, one takes place in the... I've always done it so that the public hearings, one takes place in the daytime, one in the evening just to allow for that flexibility for people who work different schedules and at least a week apart so people have an opportunity. And so once the public hearings will bring out community members who aren't on those boards, who might have some concerns. They might watch a video or see the handouts that we have recommended and they might have some questions about those things or think that they're not appropriate for the grade level that they've been requested. All of that feedback will go back to the advisory board. They will meet again after the two public hearings and before we come back to you with the final proposal. I've had experiences where the advisory board originally proposed to the board a video for, I believe it was seventh grade at the time. And the community came out in droves and they didn't want it. They didn't like it, there was, I can't remember the content, but there was something about it that was bothersome. We removed it from our proposal so that when we went back to the board, it was no longer there. And we honored that voice. Doesn't mean that we would take anything out, but it goes through that whole process again and back to the advisory board with that feedback so that they can have some dialogue around why. And so then, once they have that final meeting, they'll make that final recommendation to you. And at the end of that, at the end of that process, it will ultimately be up to you to decide. Do you approve this or do you not approve this? So this just sort of details how the public hearings work. And generally, as I said, holding them at least a week apart is required. One in the daytime, one in the evening is important. Held over Zoom or in person. And that just allows for people to be here and have an opportunity to have their voices heard. And certainly if somebody reached out to one of us and wasn't able to make it to either of the public hearings, we'd find an opportunity for them to review the materials. We wanna make sure it's an open process and that everybody has access to it if they want it and can make their own analysis of the materials and that you get that feedback. So the final steps, after the public hearings, we turn to that advisory board, make their final recommendation. And that final proposal will come to you. Once you see the final proposal, and we will invite you to all the public hearings, you'll have access to all the materials. You'll see all of the feedback that was brought by the community. And once it comes back to you, it'll be up to you to decide whether or not you wanna approve it for use in our classrooms at that particular grade level. Once you do, if you approve that final proposal, the following day, the teachers could use that in their classroom. So this year in particular, we wanna update the fifth grade, fourth and fifth grade materials. And so that's our first priority is making sure that we get that. And so as soon as we go through this process, and I'll show you a quick timeline as we get there, as soon as we go through that process, those materials would be legally accessible to our teachers. This is a tentative timeline, there's one for elementary and there's one for secondary. And I say tentative because as you start the process, you just don't know how many meetings it might take to get to where you wanna be. And in order to have all those voices be heard, in order to make sure that the process goes smoothly and by the time we get back to you, we wanna make sure that all the questions have been answered, all the concerns have been addressed, so that when you make your decision, it's based on having all the information in front of you. So I say it's tentative because it could take, as Kate starts to meet with the elementary people, I mean, her first meeting is on Monday, March 7th. As she meets with them, she may find that it's gonna take four meetings just to talk about one piece of that. Or they might love a particular resource on the first day, everybody agrees on it and it's wonderful, and they move on from there. And so it's a tentative timeline for that reason. We wanna make sure that we honor every voice, but also go through that process. Because by the time we bring it back to you, we wanna make sure that there aren't people who are shocked or surprised or hearing it for the first time so that you can make your final decision. And so this is a tentative timeline, but for the elementary, we do wanna make sure those resources are in the hands of our teachers by the end of May or by the end of April even, so that they could teach them this year. Tensive timeline for secondary, and secondary has a little bit different process to go through. Finding space for it in middle school and then in high school in our health classes, they have a little bit of a different task ahead of them. But same thing, the timeline is tentative just to allow for that conversation so that all the voices can be heard. And it could be a quick, everyone agrees and this is wonderful, or it could take three or four meetings to come to a decision. That is an overview of how the process works. But I wanna make sure I give you a chance to ask any questions about what that looks like or any concerns that you have moving forward.
Questions from the board, Mr. Neal?
I like the process you described. And I'm happy to see the diverse makeup of the committee. But one of the things that I'm concerned about is what's to preclude teachers, individual teachers, from introducing texts or books of one kind or another that didn't go through the process in their classroom?
That's an excellent question. Honestly, making sure that they all understand what the laws are and what the, what, there could be consequences as a district if we don't follow that process. So the teachers have to go through training in order to do this. And so our elementary teachers, our phys ed teachers went through the training last year at RISA. And so they all understand the laws around it. They went through, they spent hours talking about these laws just so that they understand the importance of following the guidelines and the research. My experience is that for the most part, teachers are anxious about teaching sex education. And so they stay very much in line with what is approved by the Board of Education. And that's always been my experience.
I bring that up because I've been reading recently that there's some controversy at a national level of just that thing happening where teachers are providing libraries within their own classroom. Of books that were approved by a national group of teachers that maybe are more liberal thinking than a lot of other people are. And so they have titles of books that deal with pedophilia and other things that, like at a personal level, stories of, you know, involving pedophilia and other things that a committee such as yours may not approve likely, but yet end up in somebody's classroom.
Now I understand your question and it's a little bit of a different question. And so you're talking about texts that might be available in a classroom library that contain content that we would see as sexual content. However, not being a part, not being delivered in a sex education class changes that. And so if it was a book in, if it was a high school book that was a part of a classroom library, that wouldn't go through the sex ed advisory board process. So that's a different, and I don't really have an answer to that question other than just looking at the text that we use in our classrooms and then acknowledging when those issues come up.
So you would expect whatever the committee approved, that a teacher that's actually delivering the curriculum would only use the pre-approved items?
Correct, so if it's explicit sex education instruction, they will use the approved curriculum materials. There are gray areas outside of sex ed curriculum in a health class, whether it's in an ELA class or a science class, where what you're talking about could come up. The different topics that could be discussed or in a text. But it's a separate thing from the sex ed advisory board. The advisory board won't review those types of materials. That's more of a district approach in how we manage that.
Thank you.
Chair Albrecht?
Sex education sometimes shows up in life skills and sometimes shows up in health phys ed, which is it gonna?
Well, that's a great question. It's gonna be, it's gonna sort of depend on these committees when they come together and what they recommend. And so right now, we have our, we have trained our PE teachers, but there could be a shift in that. If the committee really is adamant that they think the classroom teachers should deliver that or the life skills teachers, it may change.
Okay, more specifically, in the very first page, sex education laws, Michigan Department of Education. I assume this is all law?
Yes.
One of the bullets, and this is important, you just made a comment unless I misheard you, said establish an abstinence-only or abstinence-based policy. Our district is going to do that. Is that all districts?
Every district.
Okay, so when you said our.
Oh, I'm so sorry, no, it's a requirement, right, it's a requirement of the state.
Clear for me.
Is there other questions? Okay, the chair's gonna ask for a motion on the resolution to appoint the forty-eight community members listed in your packet to a one-year term of the Wayne Westland Community School Sex Education Advisory Board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht, support. Support by Mr. Neal. Discussion. I'd like to say before we vote on this, especially in an instance like this, it is, in my experience, very unlikely that the Board of Education, once they receive a report, recommendation from the advisory board, it would be very unusual for the board to vote other than the recommendation made by the citizens advisory. So it's important work and we appreciate those people that are agreeable to being a part of it. And to Mr. Neal's point, and I think it's a good point, not just for this particular, but other curriculum too. Once the board and the administration established the curriculum, that's the curriculum. Not what you downloaded from Google. That's been a big problem, but that is gonna be the curriculum, so. Roll call vote please, Ms. Heinz?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. And President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show six zero, motion passes.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to every member that agreed to be a part of this board. Next item on our agenda, 218.22 is the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Neal, the report, support by Dr. Weaver. Roll call vote please, Ms. Heinz?
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show six zero.
Thank you. 219.22, Board of Education Committee reports. The Finance Committee has a report, Ms. May?
Thank you, good evening, everyone. The Finance Committee meeting of the Board of Trustees of Wayne Westland Community Schools was held on Tuesday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, beginning at four thirty PM via the Zoom platform. Mr. Wolf shared with the committee the need, process, cost and new design for band uniforms for the Wayne Memorial High School band. This is a general fund expense. Mr. Beebe presented a new resource entitled NEPRIS. NEPRIS will support students in grades K through eighth with college and career readiness and eventually will be rolled out to the high school. ESSER funds will support this purchase. Mrs. Nathan and Ms. Markey explained the process for completing the ESSER III grant application. The grant will support instruction, playgrounds, HVAC, technology and other district initiatives, including transportation, employee wellness and community-based activities. Mr. Spiezak and Mr. Underwood presented information regarding bid pack number seven. This bid pack will be charged to the bond sinking fund and Head Start COVID grant. He also presented the purchase of science stools to support the new science department for Wayne Memorial. This purchase will be charged to the bond. Mr. Spiezak also explained the need for redundancy, for redundancy network fiber for the district and bidirectional amplifiers for John Glenn and Wayne Memorial. Both will be purchased with general funds. However, the bidirectional amplifiers may be charged to the MSP grant at a later date. Mrs. Cleaves presented both the investment report and the check register. She also shared a budget to actual report and plans to share budget amendment at the next Finance Committee meeting. Dr. Dignan shared good news for the district. Mr. Buckleloo and Ms. May expressed support for the items brought forth, specifically the purchase of band uniforms for Wayne Memorial and the planned usage of ESSER funds. The meeting was adjourned at five sixteen PM. The next meeting will be held March eighth, two thousand twenty-two at four thirty PM.
Thank you, May. You can see the 219.22 calls for a motion to approve the report. Such a motion isn't required. We thank you for the report, Ms. May. We'll move on to 220.22, which is a review and approval of the business service and finance items, Ms. Cleaves?
Good evening. I wanna start with the recommendation regarding bid pack seven. This is for site work improvement projects, Stottlemyre Early Childhood Center Playground, Hoover School Site Upgrades and Wayne Memorial High School Pavement Replacement. There was a bid opening held on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two and February first, twenty twenty-two. This was via Zoom. I am requesting board approval to award contracts in the amount of two million, seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. This project will be charged to the bond fund, sinking fund and the Head Start COVID grant.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, support. Support by Ms. Heinz, roll call vote, is there a discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Heinz?
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show six zero, motion passes.
Next is the recommendation to purchase Wayne Memorial marching band uniforms. There was a bid, a public bid opening held on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. And I'm requesting board approval to purchase marching band uniforms for Wayne Memorial. This is per the recommendation of Michael Wolf, our high school director of instrumental music at Wayne Memorial. The purchase will consist of marching band uniforms, awp pieces, drum major uniforms and raincoats. If approved, the contract will be awarded to Stanbury Uniforms and will not exceed seventy-one thousand dollars. The amount will be charged to the general fund.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Albrecht, support? Support, Ms. May, discussion? I have a question, are they going to be designed exactly as they are designed now? No?
No, the design is really nice.
They're really nice now?
Yeah. Well, I can't compare them. I like it now, but yeah, they'll be really nice, they'll be new. New is nice.
Further discussion? Roll call vote please, Ms. Heinz?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Heinz, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes, six zero.
Thank you.
The next recommendation is to purchase science stools for Wayne Memorial High School. I'm requesting board approval to purchase three hundred and five industrial stools for our science department at Wayne Memorial. If approved, the cost will not exceed thirty-six thousand, three hundred, ninety-two dollars and sixteen cents and will be charged to the bond furniture fund.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Neal, support by Dr. Weaver, discussion?
One question.
Ms. Heinz?
Of those standard stools, are they just like the regular kinds that come, you know?
Ms. Heinz wants to know how tall the stools are.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Heinz?
Yeah.
Further discussion? Roll call vote please.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yeah.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Six zero, let the record show, the motion passes.
I have a recommendation to purchase bidirectional amplifiers. I'm requesting board approval to purchase the amplifiers, emergency responder radio coverage system for Wayne Memorial High School and John Glenn High School. This is through CommSource. If approved, the cost will not exceed sixty-four thousand, two hundred, forty-three dollars and ninety-five cents and will be charged to the general fund.
Motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Albrecht, support?
Support.
Support by Ms. May, discussion? Roll call vote please, Ms. Heinz?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz? And President Cox?
Yes.
Six zero, let the record show, motion passes.
Thank you and thank you, Ms. Cleaves. Next item on our agenda this evening is 221.22, which is a review and approval of human resource items, Mr. Kapolka.
Thank you, President Cox, board members, Dr. Dignan. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce one of two Wayne State Warriors. The first is, he's remote, so I'm gonna apologize in advance for Mr. Kazmersky. He's the first-time athletic director, he is actually hosting girls' district basketball at Wayne Memorial. So that's where he's at this evening. So just gonna walk you through just his background and then he actually prepared a statement that he'd like for me to read to you this evening. Scott has had seventeen years of experience coaching collegiate football at Wayne State University. He's had approximately five years of coaching high school and middle school sports, various different sports. He has served as a recruiting coordinator for Wayne State University's football program for the past seventeen years as well. He has extensive NCAA eligibility experience and expertise and he has a broad range of management experiences that we believe will translate really well in his position as the athletic director at Wayne Memorial. He has degrees from Wayne State University, his bachelor's degree is in political science and then he has a master's degree from Wayne State in sports administration. And so the statement that Scott has prepared, he stated, "I'd like to thank President Cox and the entire Wayne Westland Board for the opportunity to serve as the athletic director at Wayne Memorial High School. I'm very excited about the opportunity to work in the school district and look forward to making a positive impact in this community. In my short time in the district, I felt very welcomed by..." In my short time in the district, I felt very welcomed by everyone that I have come in contact with. I can see how great this place is because of all the people that are around it and take pride in it. It feels truly like a family atmosphere, and I'm very excited to be part of this family. I look forward to building off the traditions of the past, as well as creating new ones for the future. More importantly, I look forward to working and giving our students a great experience at Wayne Memorial High School. Thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to meeting and serving you all, thank you."
Thank you for reading that, Mr. Kapolka, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht, support?
Yes.
Support by Ms. Hines, discussion?
Okay, I just want to say, winning, hallelujah. I'm excited.
Yep.
It's gonna bring more, because honestly, sports is important. Like, they help with the kids and scholarships, morale, you know, brings our district. Not only are we excelling academically, we're excelling technology-wise, we're the great sports program. Yeah, good job.
Thank you.
Other members of the Board? I completely agree, that's a good get. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six zero, the motion passes.
Welcome, Mr. Kazmerski, we're glad to have you in this role. Next item, sir?
So, keeping with the momentum going of great gets, Ms. Sally Nalu, so she's here this evening. Just going to read her biography and background, which is pretty extensive and very impressive. So she's served previously as a former EL supervisor for Southfield Public Schools, where she had served for approximately twenty-five years. Is where she started her educational career, professional educational career, and continued to move through the process of really building their program from scratch. Her degrees and certifications, Wayne State Warriors, I mentioned before, bachelor's degree in cognitive impairment in elementary education, master's degree in reading. She has her Ed Specialist from Wayne State in curriculum instruction. She's also obtained National Board Certification, which is the highest distinction you can earn as an educator, as a teacher. She has areas of certification as a K-12 Administrator, General Education K-5, English as a Second Language, Cognitive Impairment in Special Education, Learning Disabilities. As I think I mentioned before, when I go through and I do reference checks, you're always looking for things that pop, or comments and things that pop. And so I had about a twenty-five-minute conversation with her former supervisor, and it felt like it was more of a therapy session. I felt bad because I had to keep apologizing for stealing Sally, but they were very much talking about how much of a hole that it leaves them in in Southfield, and how much of a gain it is for us.
Send him a gift card. Is there a, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Moved by Dr. Weaver?
Support.
Support by Mr. Neal, discussion?
I'd like to make a discussion.
Ms. Hines?
I'm really glad, because we had a struggle with our foreign language partners, so hopefully this will make it to the next level, so, thank you, I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, President Cox?
And I vote yes.
Yes, let the record show, six zero, motion passes.
Would you like to come up and say a few words? Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, and thank you, Board, very much. Dr. Dignan and the community. I'm so grateful to be here within Wayne Westland Community School District. I'm thankful for meeting such talented professionals. I felt so welcomed the moment I walked into this district. I'm happy that we will together build an ideal program to serve our Wayne Westland growing community of English learners. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On the next item on our agenda this evening, go Warriors, two 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 point two two, Dr. Dignan, resolution with individuals with disabilities.
Thank you, Dr., or President Cox.
Got a promotion there.
Yeah. Got caught up in the hoopla, it's a hard act to follow.
I'm gonna need a new one of those steps.
Please follow along, and I'm gonna read it in its entirety. It reads as, whereas the Wayne Westland Community School District recognizes the need for strong investment in the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and whereas the Individuals and Disability Education Act was first enacted in nineteen seventy-five to help ensure that all students with disabilities will have access to free, appropriate public education, and whereas with enactment of IDEA, the United States Congress committed to fund up to forty percent of additional costs for special education, thereby promising to provide up to forty percent of the national average per pupil expenditure, which is currently estimated at thirteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight by the U.S. Department of Education. And whereas, since the IDEA's enactment more than forty-five years ago, the current federal investment in IDEA is less than fourteen percent. And whereas the Wayne Westland Community School District and many other public school districts throughout the United States educated growing number of children with disabilities, that is now more than seven million. And whereas our nation's school districts face an increased demand for greater resources to fulfill the needs of students under IDEA, including those for students affected by multiple disabilities whose individual education plans require more resources. And whereas with each increase in the IDEA child account, the School Board and others throughout the country continue to adjust their budgets to accommodate this increased need and ensure that each child educated through IDEA receives the appropriate supports, with some school districts dedicating forty percent or more of their general education budgets to special education services. Be it resolved that the School Board supports the IDEA Full Funding Act that will help strengthen the federal investment in special education by authorizing a ten-year plan to fully fund the federal share of IDEA. And be it resolved that the School Board urges Congress's strong bipartisan support for the passage of the IDEA Full Funding Act, and now therefore be it resolved that the School Board remains committed to providing students with disabilities and their families the support they need, and acknowledges the intergovernmental partnership among the local, state, and federal level of government critical to the shared investment in our children.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. Is there a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Neal, is there a discussion? Mr. Albrecht? Having had the experience working in a school district with students with special needs, and knowing that, right now, we probably have a handful of students whose educational services and support approach, if not surpass, a hundred thousand dollars each. Uh, it, nothing could be more critical. The federal government's gotta find a way to support us in that endeavor. There are just too many children anymore that have those kind of needs. And, and we can't provide the services without the financial support. Other comments? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, President Cox?
Yes.
Six zero, let the record show, the motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Two two three point two two is review and approval of legal firm representation. Dr. Dignan?
Thank you, President Cox. Last time when we took the vote, we were missing educators' legal services with Mr. Robert Lusk, that helps in our special education matters and educational law. I would like to add him for approval to the list of attorneys we can use.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Neal, support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Albrecht, discussion, members of the Board? I'd like to say for, just for clarification, Mr. Lusk was previously with the Office of Lusk and Albertson. And we've been availing ourselves of the resource of Mr. Lusk for very many years, so, this is not new. And with that, roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six zero, motion passes.
The next item on our agenda, two two four point two two, which is a student reinstatement, Mr. Toko?
Yes, I'd like to recommend the Board reinstate Student A1 under, subject to the following terms and conditions. Placement at Wayne Westland Virtual Academy. The student will conduct his or herself at all times in strict conformity with the district's student code of conduct. The parent and student understand and agree that if in the district's sole and exclusive discretion the student violates the student code of conduct in any way, the district will immediately suspend the student and initiate due process procedures to permanently expel the student from the district. Placement for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year will be determined at the end of the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The student will continue to participate in behavior modification classes and counseling.
Is there a motion to reinstate the student based upon the terms and the conditions that Mr. Toko has described?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines, support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Neal, discussion?
I like this way of doing the virtual, I think it's a lot better than just totally putting them out of school. At least it gives them time to get the counseling, you know. Virtual, they're not harming other children, you know what I'm saying? So I like this, this method.
Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yeah.
Ms. Hines, yes, and Ms. May?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Six zero, let the record show, that the motion passes.
Very good, the next item on our agenda tonight is two two five point two two, which is the Michigan Association of School Boards, Region Eight Board of Directors. Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm very excited about the nomination for Region Eight Board of Directors, and encompasses Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb County. I sent out a flyer to like all the districts in the area, I had over two hundred Board members, so I know a few districts, Romulus, Canton, you know, they're letting me know that they've supported me in this position. And one thing that I really enjoy about this is the joy of serving on the school board, the joy of being a Wayne Westland student. And actually, in my statement with the portrait of the graduate, I even did a lot of congratulations to our superintendent, Dr. Dignan, because if it weren't for him and what he has done for our district, I wouldn't even be in this position. He has really, just really brought our school district to the spotlight. Like, I brag to him so much, I send it out to other districts, because it's important, like, as a, you know, being with the Michigan Association of School Boards, you know, I am a master level, level four, I do go to other conferences, and I learn, I collaborate with other districts. But what we have to offer at Wayne, Wayne Westland School District to other districts, we have accomplished a lot of goals. We're like the phoenix coming out, you know, we're just, just amazing. So I'd like to thank you for all your work that you've done, I did it all, our staff. We have an amazing staff, we are a wonderful family. I'd like to thank our community, because we are Wayne Westland Community Schools, and I see us being a renaissance. We're gonna be like the seventh soul that other districts want to be like us. We're gonna increase our student achievement. We're gonna have more students, we're gonna have great sports teams. I'm just very excited for what the future holds. So I definitely thank my board for supporting me in this endeavor, and I really look forward to serving you guys, going to Lansing, and fighting for our children and our staff, and just making sure that, you know.
Do you require support from the Board tonight?
Yes, I require support.
Do we hear a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht? After that, I got him. Support, Ms. Hines? Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver, discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Ms. Hines, yes, Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May? Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Six zero, let the record show, the motion passes.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
And two two six point two two is the Superintendent's report and our comments, Dr. Dignan.
Thanks, President Cox, and other Board members. First off, I want to thank Joe Orban and Dr. Tara Shami for presenting this evening. You guys did a phenomenal job. Mr. Darrell Beebe and Ms. Amanda Divas, you did it very thorough. And again, the work that they're doing every single day for the last year and a half, two years, has been phenomenal. A lot of the things that, some of the strides that we've made as a district are a result of their hard work, so I want to thank you for taking the time to present this evening. Just some other things, we, just right before midwinter break, we kinda had a quick announcement about masks being optional. Part of the reason is the Wayne County Health Department only gave us forty-five-minute notice, so we just wanted to make sure we had a quick turnaround. Over midwinter break, there was another announcement made that on buses and transportation, that masks would be optional. So again, I just wanted to lift that. Probably the next Board meeting, I'd like to do a presentation on Walker Winter, just a quick presentation, not too long, just to talk about kind of the future of that building. Just some quick points, we had the ESSER III grant that was approved by the Michigan Department of Education. So I just want to thank the people out there, because a lot of the people that are sitting out there right now played a big part in that, so thank you. I also want to thank Mr. Spiezak and Building and Grounds for all their work they did last week. Most of the district was off for midwinter break. A lot of buildings and grounds or custodians were busy with deep cleaning and getting a lot of work done. They did an incredible job creating a new weight room in the basement for our PE classes at Wayne Memorial, and also cleared the bay for SME Prime Project to go in there. So again, I just want to say thank you to Tony and his team. As Mr. Beebe talked about, we secured thirty-one PE funding through Wayne RISA to provide University of Michigan Trails for all of our schools. Again, he's not kidding, as soon as he started, he started on that. And he started this fall, him and Amanda Divas, the amount of phone calls and communications that they had were incredible, so I want to thank both of you guys, because that's gonna have a huge impact on our staff and our students. So, the last thing is, Wayne Westland Community Schools is gonna host our kindergarten kickstart on March tenth at one PM. Attendees will have the opportunity to learn about the curriculum, meet the staff, and review enrollment options. Again, we can't wait to meet the class of two thousand thirty-five. The other part of that is, we are gonna, next year, we're gonna have our Young Fives too, so it's gonna kind of be mixed in there. And all of our elementaries will have, could have Young Five programs, I should say, I should say all of them will, but hopefully they will, but we're gonna kind of launch and kind of scale that. So again, I just want to thank all the work of our team, because without their hard work and always putting our kids first, we wouldn't be able to accomplish what we accomplished, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. The next item on our agenda, folks, two two seven point two two, is Citizens Comments on Non-Agenda Items. This is an opportunity to address the Board on any issue at all. Is there anyone that would like to come to the microphone?
I have Renee Bergen, I don't know if I mispronounced it. My name is Renee Bergeron. Bergeron. That's okay. My two boys go to John Glenn. The mask mandates are gone, and I want to say thank you, but not thank you to the Board. I want to instead say thank you to the parents that stood alongside me and fought, fought when our parental freedom was taken away. We showed up to Board meeting after Board meeting, we sat in on Zoom calls with Wayne County, Zoom calls with the Board of Education, we sometimes waited for two hours just to be heard. We fought tooth and nail to get a piece of our freedom back. My kids are my reason why, and these awesome parents have been my strength. They've lifted my feelings of hopelessness more times than I can count. I'm so thankful for them. I look forward to coming to the Board meetings, because I'm now fully aware of how quickly things can change. It's never been about everybody agreeing with us, it's about all of us doing what's best for the kids. We have to unite our parents, our community, this Board, and our superintendent. Parents should never again feel helpless when it comes to their child's education and health. Thank you.
You're welcome. And we have a, it's a Tyson.
Pastor Tyson?
Well, thank you. Had I, I was sit- sitting over there thinking, had I thought much in advance, I would've maybe brought, like, some cake and balloons or something to, to celebrate tonight. But, uh, just do wanna thank you for following the updated, uh, guidance and allowing us as parents and, and our kids to make decisions on things like masks moving forward. Uh, and something to celebrate, I don't know how much folks have heard from today, but I was excited to hear there was no bullying, no negativity either from students or staff um, in regards to people who, you know, may have different opinions, and I think that's a credit to, uh, the leadership of Dr. Dignan and his team. And I know they've kinda set that as the tone, and I think it's something to celebrate that that, uh, has been the case as we've, uh, started a new season here. Um, one of the things I didn't really fully grasp, uh, until this evening, just sitting down with my kids, was the level of just the emotional damage that's been done to the students, uh, over the last couple of years. But I really got a glimpse into that, as, uh, I had one who battled severe anxiety attacks throughout the day, and, um, just some other things. So I was really encouraged by the presentation on the emotional learning side and what we're doing, and, um, really excited for all those resources being provided to our students. So I think it's gonna be needed more than we maybe realize, uh, here in these moments. Um, but again, I'm thankful for your ongoing leadership, not only in ending the, uh, mask mandates, but in your desire to expand opportunities to see students thrive athletically, vocationally, and academically from elementary on, as well as the new opportunities that you're creating for students to attain a college education with little to no debt. Um, I believe that this, uh, forward thinking, uh, that continues on has the chance to make Wayne Westland a preferred district in the years to come, and I'm excited for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate those comments. Anyone else like to address the board? Thank you for coming. Next item on our agenda is review and recommendations from the members of the Board of Education, two-two, eight-point two-two. Ms. May?
Thank you. So again, I'll be brief. I want to first, um, say congratulations and welcome to both, Scott and Sally, fellow Warriors. So welcome, excited to have you. And, um, also just wanted to say thank you to the staff and Dr. Dignan for the informative presentations this evening. Um, really appreciate getting the information, appreciate your hard work to get the services to our students and to our staff and just our community in general. I know that's not easy, I know that, um, it takes a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, just, it, it takes a lot, but it's so needed, and your dedication is so appreciated. So I just wanted to take a minute to just say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May, Ms. Heinz?
I'd like to thank the board for nominating me to the Region Eight for the Michigan State J- School Board. And I also like to congratulate our new employees, the Wayne Westland family, 'cause you are family here. And I'm just really excited about the direction that our school district is going in. It's positive, nothing but rockets, and we're gonna do this, man.
I'm doing it right now, you bet. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. President, Dr. President. Congratulations to Scott Kazmierski, um, in his position at Wayne Memorial High School. I know Ms. Heinz would like to win, but, uh, all the years I coached, you gotta have players. We gotta work on that. Uh, congratulations, Sally. Uh, uh, it's a challenge, and, and, uh, and I know you know that. Thanks to the people who made presentations tonight. In particular, um, I liked the presentation related to the, uh, sex education programming and including the community in that process. In the past, that wasn't always the case. Uh, so it, it is, and it, and it's gonna make people feel as though they're, uh, part of that process, and I think that's important. Congratulations, Melody. You can take that thing with you, and when you go to the meetings.
All right.
If you don't know what I'm talking about, ask her, I, I just, anyway, thank you.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Of course, congratulations to our new folks that are with us. And, um, whatever they're paying you, we're gonna get more than that out of you, you can be sure of it. I'm, uh, thankful for, uh, this, uh, Sex Education Committee. Um, I think that it is, uh, uh, time. I was especially impressed with, uh, talking about abstinence in this day and time as a starting point. And, um, I think that we'll be greatly served by this committee. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Weaver. Chief Neal?
Uh, yeah, so first, I'd like to thank the parents who have so dedicatedly and persistently come to the meetings to fight for the freedoms of our children and, and to mask mandates. And hopefully, those types of mandates will never appear again. Um, I, I really appreciate, uh, your being here. It's been difficult, I know, uh, but, uh, the time has finally come, and I hope that stays that way. And then lastly, I wanna thank all the people involved in the Emergency Connectivity Fund Grant, uh, the Technology Department, all of you who've been involved. What a wonderful thing, it really is. That is how we'll make sure that our students stay up where they should be when they have to be at home, especially, uh, when schools are, uh, closing off and on in the way they do, that they'll have the connectivity, uh, whether they're just doing their homework, uh, on a regular basis that night, or virtual schools, whatever happens in the future. That's gonna be very important. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. I had been contacted by Walter Epps, who is a retired Wayne County Sheriff, running for the Office of Sheriff. He's also a Rear Admiral in the U.S. Navy Reserve, and he asked to meet with me. And, uh, and I told him, "I'm just one of seven people on the Board of Education, I'm not a hold by myself." He says, "I don't, still wanna talk to you." And what, what he wanted to talk about was something that was discussed at, at the end of the meeting, I don't know if it was last meeting or the prior meeting, and had to do with, uh, the situation that public school districts find themselves in. And Wayne Westland is in this unique position where we actually have school buildings in more than one jurisdiction. We have school buildings in Westland, and we have school buildings in Wayne, and we have school buildings in Inglewood. And it's interesting, those three different police agencies have different resources with which to respond. And also, uh, there may be some police agencies throughout the county that have greater resources than others and can provide more of a support to school districts. You know, it's one thing buying the technology of security, and it's another thing having someone who is an expert in it, uh, having a relationship with you. And, uh, I did, as I always do, when anybody approaches me as Board President, I always refer them to the Superintendent. By the way, that's what every member of the board does. They automatically refer any question to the Superintendent. The board is not the place to, to answer that. But I'm, but in the interest of disclosure, I, uh, frankly, I was impressed that this is the way that this candidate is thinking, and one of the things he said is that the sheriff's office is in a unique position to be a resource for school districts in the county, maybe even more so than individual police agencies. I don't know how that would work with, uh, you know, sometimes police agencies don't like other agencies stepping on their toes, but, uh, I, I bring that to your attention, so you'll know, uh, to expect a, a call from him. I thought it was interesting, and I thought it was pointed, because we'd had this discussion, uh, meeting or so ago, and we changed our, our protocols. Uh, so with that, thank you all. Uh, keep, keep getting those Warriors, Mike.
Pipeline, direct pipeline.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.